Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. You all are running to represent District Four on the Portland City Council. And I'd like to start off by having each of you take a minute to introduce yourselves, say why you're running, and include what your top priority would be if elected. And Lisa, if you wouldn't mind going first?
Sure. Thank you, Helen. Thank you, everyone, for inviting us to be here today. My name is Lisa Freeman. I am running for city council in District Four. I am a government transition and community safety expert. I've been a public servant for 20 years. I started my public service as a Peace Corps volunteer in Central Asia. And then I went on to work for the US government's Office of Transition Initiatives. And I worked in over a dozen countries overseas for over a decade to support political transitions in places like Afghanistan, Nigeria, Syria, Malaysia, Pakistan, in order to build confidence in new political systems in the midst of transition and crisis. And I often will say that I worked on very tough problems in very difficult places, but I got to work with the best people in the world everywhere I went. And ultimately, it was those people who were working to make their communities better that inspired me to shift my career to working locally. In 2022, I started working at the city of Portland in the Community Safety Division. And I led gun violence reduction initiatives that resulted in a 35% decrease in gun violence since its peak in 2022. And I also supported efforts to get the right responder to the right call when people are in crisis, calling 911, especially looking at ways that we can support alternatives to our traditional responders to alleviate the burden on them, like Portland Street Response, Community Health Assessment Treat 311, Public Safety Support Specialists, et cetera. I've built my career working in high-stakes environments, in crisis, on tough problems, and in transitions. And ultimately, that is why I'm running for city council, is because that's the moment that we're in in Portland. And I feel like my background has built me to contribute in this particular moment for Portland to move us forward.
Great, thank you. Eli, if you wouldn't mind going next, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running and what your top priority is.
Yep, so I'm Eli Arnold. I'm a Selwood resident. I'm a father of four, a veteran, and I work as a bicycle cop downtown. And I guess delve a little deeper into all of that. My military background was military intelligence. And later, I was a helicopter pilot, spent some time in Afghanistan, and really thought about communities and saw the devastation there and thought about what was happening in the US at the time. And I came back to Portland, and that led to me becoming a police officer. Since doing that, I've sort of specialized as an enhanced crisis intervention team member and also focusing on the fentanyl trade downtown. And yeah, really, I'm trying to bring that sort of firsthand experience with that stuff to policymaking. And I would say my top priority is the intersection of public safety and homelessness.
Great, thank you. Olivia, you're up next.
Thank you, Helen, and thanks, everybody here. I'm Olivia Clark. I'm running for District Four City Council in Portland. I came to Oregon to go to graduate school. I had a graduate teaching fellowship. And in the course of doing that, I discovered that I'm really not an academic. I'm an activist. And I started working on issues like affordable housing in my neighborhood and statewide. I formed a nonprofit to build farmworker housing and affordable housing, which is still building housing around the state. From there, I seem to have tackled what I would consider to be kamikaze missions throughout my career at the local level, the state level, and the regional level. Most recently, I was the person who secured the resources to build the telecom bridge and the last two light rail lines. I've also served on major boards. Most recently, I was the chair of the Oregon Providence Health System Board, where I brought forward policies on quality of care and equity in care. If you look at my website, you'll see that I've been endorsed by a broad array of interests in Portland. Everything from the Northwest Labor Council and labor unions to United for Portland. I think they recognize that I'm a hard worker and I actually get results in what I do. As far as priorities, I would say that, like Eli, the intersection of homelessness and public safety. But public safety for me broadly writ, and I hear about it all the time on the doorstep and in my house parties, that we need additional resources for the police force. We need more police on the street to be visible. We need a better response time on 911. And we need to strengthen Portland Street Response. So those are major issues for me, in addition to homelessness and climate resilience. But thank you.
Great, thank you. Bob, if you can go next, please.
Thank you. Good morning or afternoon, everybody. My name's Bob Weinstein. I'm also running for a seat in District Four. I'll tell you a little bit about myself and then why I'm running and then what my top priority or priorities are. After getting a master's in special ed at the University of Oregon, where I also had a graduate teaching fellowship, I went to Alaska as a special ed teacher flying to remote communities throughout Southeast Alaska. I later became the superintendent of the school district for 12 years. And that's where I learned a lot about public budgets, policymaking, and working with diverse stakeholders to solve issues. I was elected to the Ketchikan City Council for two, three-year terms. And later, subsequent to that, became mayor for four three-year terms, which is the longest service of any mayor in Ketchikan history. After that, I worked for a United States Senator for six years, US Senator Mark Begich, as a state staffer, not in DC. I worked on complex issues like the Tungus National Forest, the largest and without question most controversial national forest in the United States. And I think significant to the role of the new council, I was also trained and had a lot of experience in responding to constituents. I think it's critical that people have the right to contact their elected officials with issues and concerns and expect an answer. And for that reason, I am vehemently opposed to the current city administration's plan to not have us do that and to have citizens call 311 rather than their elected officials. So I'm running for city council because I think the council does need some people with experience, including experience as an elected official. I know how to work with a mayor. I know how to work with other governments. It's obviously critical that the city have a better relationship with the county, that we know how to work with state and federal governments on our priorities. My top issue is getting our fiscal house in order. As you know, we have a, unless you make $25 million, disclosure, I do not. We have the highest combined state and local tax rate in the United States. So we don't have a revenue problem. A lot of cities are doing more with less revenue. So if we can do that, if we can focus our budget on critical needs, we can focus our resources, as we already are, on homelessness. We can put more resources into public safety, more police, more firefighters, more Portland Street Response. And we can improve neighborhood livability in a lot of different ways. So that's in some way I'm running for city council.
Great, thank you. Chad, you're up next.
Bob, I wasn't laughing at you. I was laughing because my dog picked the exact time to start barking that it would be my turn. And I knew I was going to be next.
Chad, I have a thick skin. No worries.
My name's Chad Liggins. I live in Hayhurst and am the parent of three public school kids. I have a PhD in leadership and policy from Vanderbilt. And I taught at the University of Hong Kong, where I trained leaders on how to use scientific research to make better policy, specifically research around out-of-school learning. Here in Portland, I used my research to start an academy called Rose City Chess. And that now serves about 20 schools a year, including hundreds of families that live right here in this district. My campaign has knocked over 10,000 doors in all 33 neighborhoods. More than two-thirds of the donors to my campaign live in this district. And I'm pretty sure that's the highest percentage of any candidate running here and maybe in any of the four districts. Families and small businesses have told me that they're rallying around my campaign because they don't feel like the people that have controlled City Hall in the past are really responsive to them. My priorities are to make homelessness rare and brief, to keep addiction from becoming a life sentence, and to make Portland the best city on the West Coast for families and small businesses. My breadth of experience, as well as the depth of my connections to the neighborhoods and schools and families in this area, make me uniquely suited to be an effective voice on City Hall. I really appreciate this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And Eric, if you could round us out.
Sounds good. Hi, everybody. It's great to be here. So Eric Zimmerman, and I was born in Portland, grew up in the area. My folks are both products of Southeast Portland. My mom is a retired Portland Public Schools teacher. So for me, Portland is home. You may be aware that I've spent over 17 years in the Oregon Army National Guard. And so that side of my career has certainly taken me all over the world and different parts of this country. But I always come home, and Portland is absolutely home for me. In terms of my career path and why I've decided that now is the right time to run for city council, you know, I came back to City Hall after the pandemic, and I saw the state that Portland was in. I went straight to Mayor Wheeler at the time, and I said, what do you need? And what he asked me to do is at least start the recovery for downtown. And I think that the history of my career, having worked as a chief of staff for a county commissioner previously, I've been a deputy city manager in two other cities where bureaus reported to me. And being a son of Portland, I think that the mayor understood that I would be able to kind of cut through a lot of the things that had stopped the city from being productive on our most challenging issues. And so while I think that we made some important strides in terms of some camp cleanups and some closing down things like the Fourth and Washington Drug Market, the 90-day reset in the Central East Side, where we got rid of RVs, like chop shops, tons of graffiti abatement. I know that while we've pointed the city in the right direction, we still have a long way to go, I think, before we have actually achieved the kind of public safety and livability that I think that we deserve as a city, that we used to have as a city. I think that my experience, having been a deputy city manager in two other cities that's going to, in similar forms of government, will serve me well. You know, we all talk about we bring different experience levels to this. I think that the combination of having worked as a deputy city manager and in Portland City Hall and at the county headquarters gives me a unique level of experience to help bring together both the county and the city. When we talk about addressing the challenges that are at the foot of everybody, those two governments are going to have to work better together in order to make any sort of improvement. What I'm really most running on and what I most want to get done in our two-year term that we're running for is public safety and livability. Those go together. They are related to drug use. They are related to rampant camping. They are related to just the laissez-faire nature of kind of everyday life that has happened, and it hasn't been good for Portland. So that's where my focus has been. That's what I've been helping work on. My focus, when it comes to those, is getting all of our public safety entities rowing in the same direction, from park rangers, police officers, PS3s, which are in any other community, or called community service officers, PSR, everything rowing in the same direction so that we can actually restore the faith of Portlanders that when there's a problem in this community, we will be there to answer it. And Portland Solutions, who's not a public safety entity, but it's a livability and neighborhood enhancement type of program, that program has helped instill faith in Portland government, again, on a micro level across a lot of neighborhoods. And those two things together get us to be a safer city, and they get us to be a more livable city. And that's why I'm running for city council.
Thank you very much. So Eli, we'll start off with you on this question. But tell me, you know, would you seek to change or repeal the anti-camping ordinance? And what do you want to see the city do next in terms of addressing homelessness?
Yeah, so I would not seek to repeal it. I think it really balances our need to provide a place for people to go with our need to be able to say, this is not an acceptable place for you to be. So all it asks of us is that we do that work, have a place for them, and then we get to have a say in what happens next. Super important tool. I think it's incumbent that we do that providing of a place now, though. We have not moved quickly on standing up emergency shelter capacity. The county really hasn't seemed like they wanted to do it. And I think in our discussion around the Joint Office and how we move forward, like that needs to be at the forefront of it. We need a plan to provide sufficient space, you know, within a reasonable timeline. Because it's terrible for everybody to have camps in front of, you know, somebody's small business. There's actually a new camp this morning at Selwood Middle School in the area, the unfenced yard where the kids play. Tent last night popped up. And the teacher shouldn't have to worry about, who is this person? What are they going through? It's just bad for everybody. And I think there are some things we can look at. I'm really interested in the possibility of bringing in the Bureau of Emergency Management and talking about how we can deal with the acute sort of issues of camping. We've been focused on systemic sort of long-term issues related to it. But even just sort of managing the situation on the ground could result in some improvements where everybody involved. So it's crucial, working with people who are homeless every day. I know several who have died this year. It truly is a humanitarian crisis. And the idea that we don't have a plan for how this gets better this year is just unacceptable.
Great, thank you very much. Olivia, you're next. I'd like your thoughts on the anti-camping ban and what next steps would you want to see the city take?
Well, I absolutely support the camping ban. I think that we all own the sidewalks and the streets. We used to have a social contract. It seems like that has definitely broken down. I want to see the local governments, the local, the city, the county, even metro and the state, really all pulling in the same direction to coordinate our activities around this. The Joint Office doesn't have enough metrics to really measure whether or not we're making success. Sometimes I think it's probably easier for me to get an Airbnb in Mongolia than it is to find a place to stay at night if I'm a homeless person in Portland. It seems like we have really kind of a scattered puzzle pieces of the solution that rest all around us with a panoply of nonprofits and governments going in different directions. So I kind of liked Sam Adams' idea of a unified budget. I thought that was an interesting idea. I don't know if it's practical, but at the very least, we need more coordination. We need a coordinated approach, maybe a coordinated budget. I have met with Dr. Andy Mendenhall at Central City Concern to get a better understanding of what's going on. And what he told me was very disturbing, is that we have people on the street with an incredibly high acuity level. I'm sure Eli's confronted these people, people who will never be able to take care of themselves. In addition to the addiction issues that we know exist, these are people that we need to absolutely get off the street. They're a harm to themselves. They're a harm to us. In fact, friends I have downtown, women friends who live downtown sometimes map out their route to know if there's a problem where they can duck in and find safety. But we need to bring back other ideas around civil commitment. I think that's a concern for me because we do have people on the street that will never be able to care for themselves. I don't know why this is so hard, why coordination is so difficult. I see this not just in the housing arena, but in public safety and in other areas where we're not working together as a region and pulling in the same direction. And I hope that we can do that on the homeless issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, you're up next. Your thoughts on the anti-camping ban and next steps on homelessness?
Great. That's a great question. Like the previous people, I do support the ban on camping. I think as shelter becomes available, people need to be moved off to the streets into safe shelters, where if they need mental health and/or drug addiction services, those should be available. And certainly, if people want to camp and they repeatedly refuse to go to an available shelter, then that needs to be addressed. What I would do as a council member is sort of a multi-pronged approach. The first thing I would do between the election and taking office would be to have the new mayor and the new council be brought up to speed on the current status as quickly as possible. What's working, what isn't working? The need for housing, the need for shelter, city-county metro programs, and really take a deep dive into that so that when people take office, we know what's needed. We know what's needed in terms of shelter, permanent supportive housing, and also the extent of any regional success in moving people along the housing continuum. I would also make sure that we review whether or not the city and county are implementing best practices that work elsewhere, instead of always trying to create the wheel in Portland. An example of that is Houston's Coordinated Access Program, where nonprofits who wish to serve homeless populations go through the office to minimize the number of, the amount of overlap and effectively address homelessness. And my understanding is they've been successful using that model to help reduce the number of homeless people. I think the other thing that absolutely needs to be done, we need to streamline housing permitting. It's a failure in Portland. And I think everyone knows that we're at one of the lowest amounts of permits this year. As of about a month ago, there were only about 500 permits for units, multifamily units and others in Portland, far short of the goal that's needed. I attended a meeting of the Revitalized Portland Coalition a few months ago, where the interim city administrator was there with some of the higher-ups in the new permitting service area. I asked, after a builder said that he had had a permit for a duplex in the office to get reviewed and approved, no issues, he said. And in the time that the permit had been sitting there, he had built 100 homes in Oregon City and was not going to build another home in Portland of any kind until this got straightened out. So my question to the interim city administrator and the people from a service area was, with the new reorganization, which has been highly touted as a big deal to the public, what is your goal for permitting time for a project that has no issues? They could not answer it. So that, to me, was very troubling when they claimed to have this big reorganization that's going to do wonderful things, and they can't even say, our goal is the state mandate of 120 days or some other goal. So we have to do something about that. And then finally, it's clear that we have to expand shelter capacity and make sure that we have wraparound mental health and drug addiction services available. It's shameful that we don't have adequate shelter for the homeless population today. So in sum, I think we have some short-term things that we can do and also some long-term things.
Great, thank you. Chad, if you can talk about the anti-camping ban and your thoughts on what the city needs to do next to address homelessness?
Yeah, I mean, we absolutely have to put an end to people living on the streets and unsanctioned camping. But we have to do so in a legal way that's ethical and fiscally responsible. Arrest and jail are the most expensive and least effective way to try to cure homelessness. This is just like empirically the case. You know, time, place, and manner restrictions are totally reasonable. But trying to arrest our way out of this is not. So we need a better system of sheltering people. We don't want to turn into Grants Pass. It was just a few days ago that the Oregonian talked about what they're doing there and how they're trying to enforce their way out of this, where they're arresting people for the crime of being disabled and not able to move between sites. What's happening there is going to expose Grants Pass possibly to massive lawsuits that could cripple the city. We now know what kind of shelters help people in the terms of exiting to housing and not just back to homelessness. We know that jails exit people to homelessness. We know that congregate shelters, the kind that we relied on for most of our crisis, those also basically just exit people to homelessness and are a policy failure. The things that are working are the Safe Rest Villages and motel shelters. So anytime you give people a room with a door that locks, where they can have privacy and dignity, they can get their prescriptions mailed to them, get their ID back, apply for a job, have mental health care, drug treatment, job training. If you do that, the estimates just keep getting higher on how rapidly they're, and how rapidly they're exiting to permanent housing and how long they're retaining it. I've heard three times as much, four times as much, maybe even 67% of people are exiting to permanent housing. So we need to invest in that and then catch people in that moment of clarity when they are ready to come off the street. A lot of them are rightly suspicious of the kind of sheltering that we give them. The kind of shelters we've often offered don't make accommodations for their possessions or for a companion or for a pet. They may not be places that are safe and sanitary. So I think we have to do some work to re-earning their trust and think about enforcement as a very last resort.
Thank you. And so just to clarify, you wouldn't seek to amend or repeal the current anti-camping ban?
I think a lot of it is really about how it's enforced.
Okay, so but at this point, you don't see any changes?
No.
Okay, thank you. Eric, same question for you. Your thoughts on the anti-camping ban, next steps?
Yeah, I think we have to have a camping ban in Portland. I think that we've lived too long without the tools to have as a backstop, right? For a long time, we have been abating camps. We've been cleaning up camps. We have worked with outreach workers to get folks to go to shelters. But you do have to have that backstop. I'm always alarmed when people say, we can't arrest our way out and make it as if that's somehow happening on a daily basis. You know, two weeks ago, the cities, Gresham, Portland, and I presented to Multloma County about implementing their own version potentially of a time, place, and manner restriction. And what Portland shared with us is that since their restrictions went live, they'd only enforced five times. And yet, they were cleaning up 30,000 pounds of trash a week, abating dozens, maybe hundreds of camps a week in terms of the output and moving folks to shelter constantly. And so I would just think that you've got to have an enforcement mechanism. But you also, let's not blow it out of the water and say that that's the only route that Portland is using. The grand majority of camp cleanups, where we move folks either from a site that they've destroyed or into a shelter situation, is done not with police, but actually with contract workers, with outreach workers ahead of the cleanup. And that's how we're getting folks there. So I believe firmly that you've got to have an enforcement mechanism as the backstop. I also believe firmly that enforcement is not your first, second, or even third tactic to get folks to move into transitional shelter. And I'm glad folks are starting to come around on the pod villages. You know, I helped set up the task sites in the mayor's office. Today, it's our most successful shelter across the community in terms of transition to housing, to supported units. And I'll just remind people, it's wonderful that people have come along. But the same folks who don't want us to be enforcing camping regulations told us in the City Hall, told Commissioner Ryan, told the rest of the city council and Mayor Wheeler that the task site was a terrible idea, that these shelters with the pods and having a high ratio of staff who had a set of rules and how you're going to act there, but also a permissiveness in terms of, we want to make sure that shelter is available to people with couples, people with dogs, people who have a drug issue that they're working through, and people who are mentally ill. But it was the county and a lot of the county's providers who pushed back on that until we had proof of concept. So I'm glad they're coming around. But I'm always cautious as they start to now tout those types of shelters and at the same time fought us two years ago on bringing those shelters online. We have now purchased the next two task sites. We got to open them. And if we can do that, then we can reasonably continue to abate camps and enforce camping in Portland.
Great, thank you. And Lisa, same question for you.
Yeah, thank you. So I would not have voted for the current camping ban, no. I think that, as Chad said, that using jail and criminalization of people who are living outside is ineffective and expensive. However, as Eric said, there are only five people who have been fined, or I think one person has been jailed, due to the camping ban, which I think illustrates how small of a population it actually is that this whole effort was put into addressing. This idea that there's so many people living on the streets right now who just don't want shelter if offered, I think this has shown us that that's just not true.
Hasn't there been... Hasn't there been, um, wasn't there a survey done and I, I can't recall who it was that showed something like. A large percentage of people who have been offered shelter, uh, refused it.
I have not seen that, I just saw that there's only five people who've been arrested or fined since.
But couldn't that be about decisions on enforcement as opposed to the lack of a need?
I suppose it could have been, um, I have, again, I haven't seen that survey. Um, I personally do outreach in my neighborhood to folks who are living outside. I live in Multnomah Village, um, and the Multnomah Village Safe Rest Village, um, is expanding. It's going from about thirty pods to about a hundred, which is really great. And we're working to get people into those sites. And helping them show up for their interviews and get on the list. Um, there, there are people who are making it to their interview and being rejected. Um, so I think that just shows us that there are a lot of people. Who are living outside right now who do want shelter and we're not able to provide that for them. And that is where I would put my energy is toward. Building and creating more shelter options for people with lots of different needs who are on the street right now. Um, rather than a camping ban. I honestly don't know that I would be watching the camping man very carefully to see how it is being enforced, to make sure it's being equitably enforced. But if we're continuing at the same rate of about five people in six months being. A fined, I feel like that shows us that the ban is almost moot. Uh, we can focus our limited time and energy on implementing the houselessness action plan that has been developed, which has. Uh, strong aggressive metrics and timelines, and we can act with urgency to implement that. Um, one of the things that we talked about when I, um, worked overseas is it's better to be eighty percent right at the right time than a hundred percent right too late. So working with more urgency to provide more types of shelter options for people with a lot of different needs.
Thank you very much. Um, Olivia, let me ask you, or, or have you start off on this question? Um, and just a note, we have about one hour left, so I, I might be a lot more aggressive in terms of kind of keeping answers moving. Um, so Olivia, what should the city council aim to get, get done in its first six months?
That's a good question. Well, first of all, I think, uh, we need a really good onboarding process to prepare us. Uh, in fact, we might even want to hire a marriage counselor to help us figure out how we're all going to get along. Um, but I think the onboarding process will kind of set the stage and be the beginning for us to, uh, have a. Kind of a level playing field of knowledge about the city and get to know each other. In the first six months, I think it's really important that we demonstrate some kind of results to the public. They have very high expectations and I've talked about redoubling our efforts, particularly in the downtown. Uh, graffiti removal, trash removal, on-street camping immediately show some sort of results. In the, the areas that are most effective, and that's downtown, uh, the Old Town and the Pearl District. Um, if we don't show some sort of immediate results, I, I think people are going to be, they're already pretty impatient. Uh, with the promises that the city has made and, um. So I think something like that is, is really important right out, right out of the chute. Uh, maybe a, a ninety day, uh, agenda.
Okay, thank you. Um, Bobby, your top priorities or what, what do you think the city council needs to get done in its first six months?
Sorry, I unmute every time, just so I'm not bothering anybody. Um, well, first of all, we need to organize, you know, we need to find out. Uh, how we're going to work together, what the rules of procedure are going to be. We do not have to accept the rules that are in place for the current council whatsoever. So we need to have a process. I agree with Olivia, we need to go through some onboarding process, but not with the current. City Hall bureaucracy leading that because as I said earlier. They're not, either they lack an understanding of how a city council should operate. But the bottom line is they set out with their recommendations for staffing and other things to essentially kneecap the new council. So that the council is not able to carry out its functions. So we'll have to address that. Then we'll have to, in my opinion, take a deep dive into the budget so that the council understands where the money is going. So that when it comes time for budget time, which will be beginning. Uh, around that time, people know where money might be available to focus. By reallocation on some of our priorities. And we've heard what some of the priorities are, especially around public safety. We have enough money between the city and county for homelessness with the seven hundred million a year. We need to do what we can to boost public safety budgets, neighborhood livability. We need to fix our potholes, and I think the money is there to do that. So that would be my priority, and as Olivia said, I think we need a. Short list of top things to work on in the first six months or twelve months. And, and, and find out if we're actually accomplishing anything. And not just say, we're going to have a plan and not find out if the plan had any success.
Thank you. Um, Chad, if you can go next, what do you think the city council needs to achieve in its first six months?
Um, six months is not a lot of time, so we'll, we'll have to hit the ground running here. Um, I would say the top two things would be permitting and citing, uh, new shelters. And this is going to be the place where we have to come together and agree upon a vision as to who we are as a city. Do we believe in science? Do we believe the evidence about how we can actually, um, end unsheltered homelessness here? Um, I, I think we need to cite and permit fifteen to twenty, uh, more sites for pod villages and motel shelters. So that means taking a hard look at the total census of available city land, because that stuff, you know, you can kind of accelerate the process since the city already owns it. And then also, uh, working through, uh, an RFP to all, uh, motel owners. Vacancies are still pretty high. Um, and I think we can probably acquire most of those motel rooms for about a third of the cost as, as building it new. It makes more sense to buy them rather than keep paying like nightly fees for them because, um. We can, if we own it, we can eventually convert it to single-room occupancy housing or permanent supportive housing as we start, um. You know, you would hope, working our way out of the homelessness crisis. Uh, the second thing would be, um, thinking in more of a long-term vision as to who are we a city and what is our strength? And the thing that Portland has that very few cities have is neighborhoods, like complete connected neighborhoods. Other places have subdivisions. So, uh, I'm a big supporter of the Inner East Side for All program that is being, um, pushed by Portland Neighbors Welcome. It made it into the housing production strategy, uh, at least the first step. And that would upzone from twelfth to sixtieth and from Fremont to Powell to allow four floors and corner stores. Um, uh, having, uh, this increased zone density makes it possible to, to not just make more affordable housing, to make housing more affordable. By, um, increasing supply.
Thank you. Eric, your thoughts about the first six months for city council?
Yeah, I mean, given my experience, I know that by June thirtieth, we've got to have a, over an eight billion dollar budget passed. So that's front of mind, I think, in the first six months, uh, opening a sobering center. And, and while that is a county function, I don't think it's going to happen without the city of Portland being fully invested and fully a partner in opening a sobering center. The county's plan is too long. We've got to have an option to take the deep intoxication off the street so that Portlanders see a change happening as soon as possible. It goes along with opening up the, the shelters that we have already funded that continue to languish and not be opened, they've got to be opened. Um, but I think that within that first budget, coming up to the end of the six months, that'll be when we pass our first budget as a city council. What I really hope is that Portland Solutions, the, the program right now that is working with neighborhoods across the city. To work on the most entrenched problems is fully funded. Right, they are the ones right now who have the most community-based connection and is making the most difference for Portlanders every day. They've got to be fully funded, it's a new idea and a new program, I want the next city council to take care of that. I hope we don't hire our first C A O in the first six months. I hope that Mr. Jordan will stay on with us, let us deliver our biggest product, which is our budget within the first six months. And then go through a very deliberate process to have the right person come in and guide us through the next few years for their C A O. And then, uh, lastly, I think the city council in those first six months. Coming together and identifying, putting on paper and giving that product to the county for what are our expectations for the joint office? And whether or not the city of Portland remains a partner in the joint office in the years to come. We need to outline those goals and those outcomes that we expect, uh, within those first six months.
Thank you. Um, Lisa, what are your thoughts of the first six months?
Yeah, so from my experience working, um, on political transitions, I know that the first six months are incredibly critical time. They're a time when people's confidence in the system is most shaky and they need to see results and know that the new system is being responsive to them. So there are two things that we, every place I worked was different and we had different needs and crises to address. But two things that I always did, um, with programs I ran overseas when we were working in the midst of a transition. Were number one, strategic communications. So really thinking about how are we communicating out to our constituencies? Uh, what we're doing, what our plans are, being transparent and really establishing that system for strong engagement. So people feel that they, um, that we are accessible to them, that their voices are being heard and that they can be bought into this new change. And the second thing was finding and identifying quick wins to demonstrate that responsiveness. Right off the bat to buy the time for the longer term changes that need to happen over the next two years for District Four and four years for the rest. Uh, for districts one and two. Um, and so two things that I've heard campaigning so far that are top priorities, one is a citywide issue and one is a specific District Four issue. First is Portland Street Response, fully funding and expanding Portland Street Response to twenty-four seven operations. That is a top priority that has come up in community meetings every time, um, it's raised. And that is something the new council can do quickly within the first six months, either as a standalone ordinance or in the spring bump. Um, and the second item would be addressing, um, risks associated with the critical energy infrastructure hub. This is something that residents in Linton in District Four have been asking for, for years. And we can start by revoking the land use compatibility statement for Zenith Oil.
Thank you, um, and Eli?
Yeah, uh, I think the first thing, uh, we need to project stability. So there's going to be a lot of people nationwide looking at Portland and seeing what happens. And there will be some people ready to celebrate, uh, if we stumble. And so, uh. First, we need to do no harm. Uh, we need to show that we can, uh, be cooperative and, um, and, and just sort of. Move through this initial transition, establish a culture, uh, that's very cooperative and, um. And productive, uh, and then, uh, of course, the budget, uh, is hugely important. We're going to have a lot of brand new, um, people on city council. And there's, you know, a lot of shifting, um. Parts in city operations, and so, uh, hugely important. And, uh, and then if I want to look at just like a little tiny thing, uh, what's a really easy thing? And we'll see who's on there for where, you know, Seven Boats lies, but, um. You know, I think there's some little things in city code that would actually be very easy that, um, might address things that just bother people. Uh, like, like machete men. Uh, I had to take a machete away from a guy at, uh, Cooch Park recently. You can do that in a park, but if you're standing on the sidewalk across the street while school's letting out, you can't do it. And that's just a little sentence we can copy and paste from one part to the other. Um, so there's my super easy win.
Thank you. Um, Bob, you'll go first on this question, and you've actually raised this issue about the budget. We're facing a very tough budget ahead. Um, at the same time, we are billions of dollars behind in, in, uh, street maintenance and hundreds of millions behind in parks maintenance. Um, what ideas would you bring to the table to address our ongoing budget issues?
Well, first of all, I want to say that I think that the mayor and the city administrator. Knew that the next fiscal year would be a problem when they were preparing this year's budget. And disclosing it after the fact is sort of a disservice from my perspective. Anybody who does budgets, whether it's private sector or public sector projects out a number of years. My sources at city hall said they were aware of that. And, and, and that is, um, unfortunate. Uh, I, I think as I have said, that we will need to focus on our budget on what I call a critical needs. Based policy where the vast majority of the budget goes to what. People throughout the city, but especially in District Four have told me are priorities, and that's homelessness, public safety. Um, neighborhood livability, fixing our streets. And you might say, well, how do we do that? Well, again, we need to look at the details of the budget. At a meeting I was at with the interim city administrator, he mentioned the new. Uh, as part of the reorganization, they created four new centralized offices. Under the mayor administrator, one of them's the Office of Centralized Communications. At this meeting, he mentioned that they have, despite this centralized office, eighty-five communication persons. In the six service areas, think about that for a minute, eighty-five in six service areas. And. They sort of had the cart before the horse. They should have taken a look at, if we're going to have this centralized office, are we going to make significant reductions among the eighty-five? The answer should have been yes. Instead, it was left, uh, it wasn't addressed. So I suspect, and I'm not an expert in the city budget, that there's multiple examples like that. That millions of dollars could be reallocated from, uh, things like that. Reduce bureaucracy in city hall. My understanding is if we compare ourselves to cities like Minneapolis, significantly overstaffed. And that will give us the money that we need to hire more police, hire more firefighters. And fully staff Portland Street Response and, and maybe even fix a few potholes citywide. Yeah, so that's, that's what I think, uh. Needs to be done, I think the city's going to have to make some tough decisions and stop funding lower priorities. You guys had an editorial in December of nineteen eighty-three that happens to have been. Origin, it, it's still on my homepage and it always was. That elected officials have to have a financial reckoning. And address the issue of a couple special tax-funded programs. Awash with cash while basic needs that people care about are going unfunded. That's what we have to do, and I agree with your editorial.
Thank you very much. Um, Chad, your thoughts in terms of the, uh, the budget that we've got coming up? And any ideas that you would bring to the table to address either ongoing needs or the, the massive backlog we have?
Yeah, we, we have a duty to make sure that we are on a stable financial footing, um, both in terms of revenues and expenditures. Um, the, the thing that we can do, uh, to help us long-term i- is to stabilize our expenses is, is shelter people. Uh, the extraordinary cost of having this many people unsheltered are, are a huge burden to every part of our city. We're spending a lot of money on sanitation, on court costs, on legal cases. Um, so this is one of these things where that if you don't. I, 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 I've said this, I feel like so many times, but I don't think I've said it in the Oregonian interview, but you can't just fix by enforcement what you bungle by design. So, um, we're in this situation where we have poorly designed systems and we are trying to dig our way out of them, uh, without the right tools. So we have to have shelters that actually have a, a high outflow to, um, permanent housing. Um, the other thing, th- this is, uh. Where we have to be sensible is a- adequately resourcing our permitting staff. Um, we need, uh, as other people have said, to, uh, issue permits in a more timely manner. Uh, every month that you haven't issued a permit is a month that you're not collecting property taxes. Um, we've got to be able to increase revenue, which means getting more things built and getting the highest and best use out of our land. Um, so I think that's one of those things that I'd be very hesitant to cut because in the long term, that, that, that hurts our tax revenue. There's other, um, sort of smaller ideas, um, you know, taking a hard look at all of our contracts. We like as a city to, um, contract out a lot of, uh, services that really are central, like security. Public safety should be a public good, uh, we should look at that. We hire consultants for a lot of things, um, I think that we should ha- have a hard look at, um, those expenditures. Uh, things like downtown clean and safe. I'm not sure that we should be using city dollars to hire lobbyists, um, uh, for the Portland Metro Chamber. Um, I think that those kind of things, uh, you know, no, no one of them is huge, but they add up to this culture of, uh, le- letting things slide.
Great, thank you very much. Um, Eric, your thoughts on, in terms of addressing the, the difficult budget si- situation that we'll be facing?
Yeah, you know, I've, I've gone through the, the pairing down to core services in, in two other cities where I was a deputy city manager. It is an incredibly tough and can be a passionate conversation for folks who are supportive of, of varying city services or city programs. But I think that, uh, we have never had a core services conversation at the city of Portland, given our current. Form of government where we have five fiefdoms and we have bureaus who are protected by an individually elected commissioner. But this is a very regular practice in communities that have a city manager where everybody works within the same pyramid of decision-making. And so I, I actually will, uh, ask that we have that conversation. Through our new city administrator, through Mr. Jordan, through the council to say, what are our core services? What I, what I think is that, um. A good practice upcoming is you constrain in certain areas. But I would be against in twenty twenty-five at across-the-board constraint budget, and that's because I don't think you constrain.
And that's because I don't think you constrain your budget in an area that you're currently uh uh in crisis. And so public sa- our public safety budget should not be constrained in twenty twenty-five. I think we've got to hold fast there. But the city administrator who sees duplicative services across bureaus is going to identify where planners don't need to exist in several different bureaus, where community engagement personnel don't need to ex- exist at least on the level they do in so many different bureaus. P-Bot is quite the animal in our community. They put on a whole lot of recreational events. They also fill potholes. I think they have grown so far out of core services that there are there are great employees who can probably do that, or we can or we can shrink down the footprint of those recreational activities within the Parks and Recreation Budget, so that planners are planning, street maintenance folks are street maintaining, and community engagement people are engaging across the board. So I I I've been a part of these types of conversations. I do think that a core services conversation is so needed in Portland. I don't think that we will solve the entire pyramid growth and making sure everything's aligned necessarily in the first six months. But I do think we have to be prepared and starting to set up for a constraint budget. And lastly, uh, just to go one more point, Helen, is I think we have got to be a city who signals that we are open for growth. And so in our, in the Oregon system, your city will not uh flourish and thrive if you are not a growing city, right? Our our limited tax structure and the way it works, we have got to continue to grow. If downtown remains vacant, if other areas are not growing, then our tax base is going to plummet even more so than it would naturally, and we've got to stop that. And we can send some signals to be open to new development, especially for those of us representing downtown.
Great, thank you. Um, and Lisa, your thoughts on the budget?
Yeah, I worked for the city during the ARPA boom, um when there was a flood of federal dollars that was um really helping us address some critical crises. And then this last year was very painful with that ARPA cliff um where a lot of services that had been funded with those federal dollars, we didn't have the funding to take that on. So I know how painful these budget decisions can be when there isn't the funding to continue services that have started. Um, I do think that the change in our form of government is absolutely going to help with this issue because um we will have elected officials who are not overseeing their fiefdoms, as Eric said. We will have a city administrator who's able to look at the budget as a whole and find areas um where there can be alignment, um rather than working on these short election cycles and continually funding crises and things to keep the lights on whether rather than just investing in the future. So two things that I would want to do is first, look at existing plans that already exist to help with this problem. For example, um, P-Bot completed a pricing for equitable mobility, pricing options for equitable mobility plan um to help address some of its budget crisis several years ago. Uh, many of the steps in that plan have not been completed. While I was at the city, we looked at, um, we did a call allocation study to look at all the calls coming into nine-one-one. And it found that at least thirty percent of those calls could go to non-traditional responders, which are often less expensive. Um, I would also look across the budget at external contracting um and consulting services. I spent most of my career managing contracts. There are some places where we absolutely need external partners to implement services, but I think that we are overrelying on external consultants currently, and these budgets are often bloated, especially services for plans, strategies, um and 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 uh and background documents. We um, we need to focus on action implementing the plans we already have and stop funding more plans and strategies through external consultants.
Great, thank you. Um, Chad, if you can go first on this next question, what should be the next iteration of Portland Street Response?
I think I missed that one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Eli. Sorry. Sorry, um, so I'm sorry about that. So Eli, if you can go first on the budget question?
Yeah, uh, this is a unique opportunity to go looking through uh our city government for redundancies and inefficiencies, uh, which we definitely need to take. And I I hope there's a lot to gain there. Uh, we really need to focus on the core services. Uh, we can't cut public safety. Um, and getting our our public safety responses right and and having people feel like the sort of period that's kind of chaotic out on the streets, uh having people feel like that's over is crucial to our recovery. We gotta uh repair uh our reputation damage. Uh, so we can't afford to make cuts there. We need to send good signals uh that Portland wants to be a partner um to business. It sees that maybe some of the mistakes we've made, but you wants to be a good place um for families to invest their futures in. You know, and and this is signaling that we're we're working toward, even if it takes a long time, getting our police capacity right uh toward ending street camping. And um and 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 part of that also, we need to have uh our permitting office funded uh properly so that it's not lagging during recovery in periods. And and we do everything we can to shorten uh the timeline to get permits out the door um so that so that we can attract uh developers and investors, because we need them.
Thank you. And Olivia?
Thanks, Helen. Uh, I'll just try to add a couple of new ideas, because you've heard a lot of really great stuff. I'm also one of those back-to-basics person. I really want us to look at our essential services and and start there. That's really where the budget needs to start. We also have a lot of neglected assets throughout the s- the city bureaus. We need to bring that back up and talk about that. The next city council has to have a lot of courage, a lot of political will to address this as the pandemic monies are all going away. We do need to find savings, and I think we will find savings in the bureaucracy in the consolidation of the agencies. But let me just add one thing that hasn't been brought up, and that is that the city also has a government affairs office that needs to be involved in the twenty twenty-five transportation package that's coming up, not just to protect our interests, but to grow uh the resources there to bring back to to Portland. In addition to that, we need to work with the National League of Cities and others to advocate for the federal government's role uh both in transportation, but also in housing. You know, it's something like our, I think our our GDP is something about eighteen percent in healthcare and less than a percent in housing, and housing is healthcare. So I would advocate that we also work at the federal level to push the federal government to help us with housing and transportation.
Right, thank you very much. Um, okay, now, Chad, if you can go first on this question, what should be the next iteration of Portland Street Response? And how would you fund it?
Um, Portland Street Response is is overwhelmingly popular with the voters, and they they told us what they want. They want it to be twenty-four seven, and they want it to be able to respond to a wider range of cases. This is um something that I think will be good, not just, you know, for PSR, but it'd be good for all of our emergency responders. Dirt, when the uh, when PSR is out there from eight to ten PM, uh, there's an eighteen point seven percent reduction in calls to the police department for non-acute emergencies, which means that um our officers can be more focused on uh violent crime and property theft. So I I think that uh expanding the hours is really important. I think expanding uh the the range of places where they can respond to emergencies um is is also important. Um, it it, I I can't see any sort of valid philosophical reason why uh PSR wouldn't be allowed in a building. Because uh crises happen there also. I don't see a really good reason why uh PSR should uh clock out at ten PM when we know that there's such a, you know, high acuity that happens at night. Uh, as far as funding it, um, I'm open to a a lot of different um uh strategies. This is something like we've got to figure out together, and I'm looking forward to look working with the rest of the council on it.
And when you say expand the kinds of things that they do, um, you you've referenced um going into buildings. So for instance, going into a person's residence, is that correct?
Yeah, I understand there can be some security um concerns there, but I think that there are a wider range of of things that they could be uh allowed to do. And this is something where we could look at like Kahoot and other places and figure out what are other non-emergency response services doing.
Great, thank you. Um, Eric, your thoughts on the next iteration for PSR?
Um, some similar things as Chad, actually. I think uh for me, I I don't want to talk a lot more about the future of PSR unless it involves a transport and shuttle future. Right? I think the grand majority of Portlanders actually believe that PSR is taking folks pe- places, and we know that they're not. So I think that's huge in terms of their future as a service. Uh, and we know that they can. In fact, there's TV news footage of them transporting people during our ice storm this last winter, and they can do it in certain protocol situations. But I think as a Portlander, I expect that they're transporting people almost all the time. And we get hung up on things like the word transport versus the word shuttle, and who has the right as a union shop to do it. Uh, I I don't, I think those are worthwhile conversations to get through. But that's where we talk about their future. In terms of how do we fund them and how do they grow their hours? Uh, and how do we, how do we find places for them where they can go into? And and those considerations that Chad, I think others will will note is, I I actually think, and we tried to do this, uh Commissioner Brem Edwards, who I worked for, uh we proposed funding them from a part of the joint office this last year. And we were not able to get the votes to be able to do that, and it would have secured uh part of the kind of the gap of PSR funding, and and the county wasn't there. I'm not done with that idea, though, because I think there's a natural connection where the city's joint office dollars can fund part of PSR's future. And given the fact that we're going to be opening up a sovereign center, and we have built into that plan uh the old Cheers model that we used to have in our community, the the Kahoots model that's down in Eugene, the model like we have at Turk House in Baltimore, Maryland. Transport is huge for a sovereign center, and I actually don't know that we need to recreate the wheel, because we have PSR vans who are perfectly equipped. The employees are perfectly equipped. I think I see a value proposition there that serves both needs and is a good way for PSR to secure some funding in an area that maybe they haven't traditionally uh been funded from.
Great, thank you. Um, Lisa, your thoughts on PSR?
Yeah, so when I worked at the city of Portland, I got to participate in Harvard Government Performance Lab's Alternative Nine-One-One Emergency Response Cohort. So I participated in this cohort with people from the Portland Fire Bureau and uh the Bureau of Emergency Communications, along with fifteen other jurisdictions nationwide who are uh implementing or expanding Portland Street Response-like programming. Um, it was very energizing for me because I truly believe, after working with these other cities, that this is the future of public safety. So the the future that um I want to see for PSR that's based on best practices from other jurisdictions nationwide is, yes, going twenty-four seven. This would also enable us to tap into Medicaid funding that we currently aren't able to tap into, which could help with the funding and being able to actually bill for the services that PSR provides. Um, as I mentioned before, there's already an existing call allocation study um that discusses different types of call types that could be shifted to PSR. So I agree that we need to expand the types of calls that PSR can respond to. And we do, I honestly didn't think I'd agree with Eric so much in this interview, but uh we absolutely need to make sure that PSR can shuttle transport. Um, this is something working with other jurisdictions, they were shocked to find out that we don't do this in Portland. There's someone I talked to who said, my staff would take a client to the moon if that would help resolve their crisis. We should be able to take people where they need to go. Um, another thing um that many cities nationwide are starting to do is create their own co-equal public safety bureaus for programs like this. Albuquerque is a gold standard city in this respect. Durham and even Seattle, which is our neighbor to our north, has started a third branch of public safety for this type of mental health crisis response. And so giving Portland Street Response the leadership and commitment that it deserves at the same level of police and fire is something I would also want to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Eli, what's your thought on on the next iteration?
Yeah, so uh I've actually worked with Portland Street Response in the field. I've also gone uh on a ride along with them, just so I could see sort of on the operation side, how they get dispatched, what does their day look like, and and uh bounce some ideas off of them. And I I think a big part of um what's been interesting about them is they've sort of been fought over from kind of like ideological positions. And I think it's really just about shaping the tool to be effective. And right now, we've got to, they've got to be able to transport. Uh, that's that's absolutely necessary. Uh, I think we need to look at the possibility of being able to write mental health holds. They would still potentially uh need police help to to enforce them, but even just being able to write it uh is potentially valuable. Project Respond uh has been around for decades, is a high acuity version of what PSR is, that's a county, works great. Uh, I really think they should be more closely linked. They've been operating long enough now. I think we can do a real review and say, what are you guys comfortable expanding into that you don't do now? Like, like going indoors, uh like dealing with maybe low levels of aggression uh displayed by the person they're contacting. But we we can start having that conversation. Um, and then I also think county needs to uh chip in uh for paying for this. Uh, county is responsible for mental health uh responses, that's what it is. So uh I would like to see them get involved uh in helping out.
Thank you. Olivia, your thoughts on PSR?
Great, thanks, Helen. Well, I think everybody's already stolen my thunder. But uh I think when it comes to PSR, uh we need, really need to prioritize what's the most important thing we do first. And for me, transport is absolutely the first thing we do. Uh, I'm less concerned with twenty-four by seven in the short run, but I think that's important as well. But one thing that we haven't talked about and related um to PSR is the chat program inside the fire department. Nobody seems to know about that, and they're actually relieving uh some burden in the fire department by responding to uh low-acuity medical calls so that we don't need to have multiple fire engines uh showing up when somebody has just taken a fall or or is has nausea or whatever people call for. But the chat program really needs to be looked at. And what that says to me is that we need to take a more global look at our whole public safety ecosystem. And that part of that can take place at the local public safety coordinating council, where all the law enforcement folks sit. And it and it should include the chat program, PSR, but really to look at a more coordinated response to all of these public safety needs in the community.
Thank you. Um, and Bob?
Yeah, uh, thank you. I'll in part repeat what you've already heard, and I apologize for that. Um, well, first of all, uh, Portland Street Response is a new program. It's not a perfect program. And I think it's the duty of the new council to find out what's working with it and what isn't. Are the response times good? Are what's effective, what isn't? Instead of blindly saying that it it's a perfect program, we just have to expand it, and everything will be wonderful thereafter. So we need to do that. Um, as you know, there's a strong advocacy group behind Portland Street Response that encourage candidates to sign a pledge that will be fully funded. Um, I don't sign pledges, and I certainly don't sign budget pledges, because I think all the budget issues need to be looked at holistically by the council and not pre-commit millions of dollars to one area and find out either you can't fund something that you think's important that you learn about, or you break your word to those to whom you you pledged. We heard about transport, not going to repeat that. An example of a lack of city-county coordination is PSR asked for hold authority, the county denied it. So that has to be looked at. And then finally, since the county is responsible for behavioral health, and since the county does have Project Respond, I think there has to be a serious conversation about merging PSR and uh Project Respond under the auspices of the county. So it's two things, more efficient, and second, fully funded. And that would allow the city to take funds that are going to PSR and use them for other public safety purposes. And I'll I'll give you an example, not that that amount of money would be adequate to do this, but in September of twenty-two, the Fire Bureau had a study that said we need six new fire stations in Portland due to increase in population, changing demographics, so everybody can get the same response time. To me, especially because the bulk of Fire Bureau calls are medical in nature, and every minute is a life-or-death kind of issue, we need to make progress on that. So that's why earlier I said I approach public safety globally, police, fire, PSR, not one or the other. I I don't think it's an either-or situation.
Great, thank you very much. Um, Eric, if you can go first on this question, do you think the city is getting enough value for the um the money that it puts into its partnership with the county on homelessness response? And what would um uh what do you want to see from the county in order for the city to stay in this, continue with this partnership?
I mean, ultimately, I think we have had a pretty negative partnership over the last several years. I think that um the county's perspective has been working in a lot of ways against where the city needed things to go in terms of cleanup, some level of accountability for for rampant camping. And wh- where I've been really trying to push the joint office over my time now, having just come back to the county to help Commissioner Brem Edwards, is They talk a lot about their outputs, what they spend, where they give money to, but they don't talk often enough. And they don't describe what outcomes that they're trying to achieve. As a city commissioner, as a city councillor. I want to hear the outcomes that the county thinks it can achieve and then grade them on if they achieve those outcomes. I think that um as the mental health authority, as the behavioral health addictions authority in our community. As the city, I need the county to be better at opening up mental health beds, at opening up residential treatment, at opening up outpatient, inpatient. All those types of treatment options, sobering. Um, and those aren't necessarily joint office funded. But they are a huge leverage point, as far as I'm concerned, for where the city should leverage its partnership. I think the county wants us to stay in that partnership. I think that there is a route in which we can do that. But the county has got to fulfill their duties in the other aspects of of our government. Do I think we're getting our our money's worth? Certainly not. Am I happy that they finally have started to provide services at the shelters that we opened as a city? Yes, I am. So I think they have a terrible history. I do think that they have made some incremental and important steps in the right direction. I am also very hopeful, particularly based on your endorsements that you released for the county races that are up. I am very hopeful for the future board at the county commission, and we will, we will hopefully get to kind of forget. This this most previous board and and the previous years who really was not working. To make the joint office actually have any sort of outcome for the other seven hundred thousand people who call Portland home.
Great, thank you very much. Um, Lisa, if you can address the question, uh what um has the city gotten its value for? The uh the money it's put into the partnership, what would you want to see in order to remain in this partnership?
Yeah, uh, no, I don't think we've gotten our value uh out of this. I'm sure along with the other candidates here and talking to uh residents over the last however many months, people have been campaign campaigning. Knowing that this is a top issue for many Portlanders is frustration at the amount of money that is going towards this problem. And the lack of results that we're seeing. I think that the city certainly cannot solve the problem of houselessness on its own. We need this partnership with the county, so we have to find a way um to make this work. Um, I believe we need to stay in the joint office and make it work. There's just leaving would not help solve the problem. Um, I do think that bringing my experience from working in emergencies for my entire career. Um, we can bring some approaches to that partnership that would help uh address this crisis with more urgency. Um, and getting money out the door faster for people who are currently on the street. And some of these things, working in emergencies, um the approaches we developed were around. We can't have these really long planning processes when you're working in emergencies. Um, you need to start with action and learn from doing. And we should have been doing that all along, and COVID held us back um and slowed things down. But we really need to start focusing on action um and learning from what we're doing. Um, we also need to be able to take more risks um to have imperfect solutions. And again, focus on the implementation and learning from what we're doing rather than trying to get it one hundred percent right at the wrong time. Let's do more eighty percent right at the right time, and I think we can work with the joint office. To implement with more urgency um solutions that might not be one hundred percent perfect, but will be better than doing nothing.
Thank you. Um, Olivia, your thoughts on the partnership?
Um, thanks Helen. Um, I don't think it's working. Uh, I don't think we're getting our bang for the buck. I do want to give uh Dan Fields more time. Uh, Dan and I both work for Governor Kit Sabre. I have a lot of faith in him uh to make progress. I think he is making progress. But I'd like to see a lot more measurement, a lot more metrics, and I would, like Eric said, know know what the outcomes are. We're not uh, we're not documenting that. I would also like to see more accountability in the contracting that they do with all of the nonprofits around the city. It seems to me that we could be asking a lot more of these organizations and holding them more accountable. But I think the jury's still out on on the joint office. I think it is important that we stay in for now. Uh, but we do have a lot of leverage there. Thank you.
And Eli?
Yeah, um, so I've been very frustrated uh with the joint office. Uh, we're we're like nine years since the emergency declaration, or like double the length of World War Two. And we've only gotten farther away from from sheltering a few thousand people. Uh, some examples of my frustration, Bybee Lakes is a fantastic shelter, and it's only half funded, and it's just sitting there. Um, uh, it is the nicest shelter I have been in. It's calm, their daycare facilities, their industrial kitchen, like it's great. It's it's waiting to be used, but they're just not taking advantage of that opportunity. Uh, the the saying they needed three years to develop software to manage the by name list uh this year, like that's wild to me. The absence, I I've repeatedly tried to get shell uh people into shelter uh in the last few months and failed every single time. As somebody who actually works with these systems, I still couldn't get a person into shelter. So it 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 drives me a little crazy. I would like to see um. Uh, clear goals, like what what is the number of shelter spaces we're shooting for here? And when are we planning on achieving that? And then let's start, let's start measuring our progress. Also, a- as was just mentioned, the situation with all the nonprofits, uh they're sort of connected to servicing. Uh, people here, it's it's just chaos. Uh, I was involved in that pilot project with outreach workers and police this year, and it was. There there's so much duplication and um. So I I would like to see a lot of changes. I I think we need to uh really focus on. Uh, on how we can do that as we're negotiating with the the joint office here in the next few months.
Thank you. Um, Bob?
Yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, it's a great question, but yeah, my answer is no. The joint office has not been working well. If it had been, the number of homeless would not have tripled since two thousand fifteen. It would have gone the other way. Um, like the others, I think we need to stay with the joint office for the short term as a new council. With the understanding that there will be meaningful metrics, there will be accountability. And there'll actually be accountability from county government. And when I talk about that, I also mean that we have to see an end to what can best be described as the dictatorship of the county chair. You can't have all these decisions, deflection center or other decisions being made without input. Good faith input being solicited from fellow commissioners, from the city, from professionals. And that's why when the deflection center was unrolled or unfurled, whatever. There it was changed daily because of all the criticism. So there needs to be a wholesale change in how the county operates, or I think we're doomed to seeing more of the same. To briefly repeat what I said earlier, I think it has to be one of the priorities for the new mayor and council to get into to see what's been happening, what's been working, what isn't working. And uh see where we're at in terms of implementing best practices. I referred to the Houston Coordinated Access Program earlier. Uh, clearly, that's not happening now. Uh, other candidates have referenced the plethora of. Nonprofits we have that are getting millions and hundreds of millions of dollars every year with no meaningful accountability. That has to change. And then finally, we obviously have to streamline our permitting process so we can provide more housing and affordable housing in in the city.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Chad?
Um, no, I I I'm not satisfied with the results. I don't think we've gotten our value, and I don't think anybody at the county would 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 say that either. Um, I think that um everybody agrees. I think folks that are living on the street and not getting services would agree that um the J O H S is not performing. I think that part of this goes back, you know, it it's it's easy to forget, but a few years ago, um, the city and the county had such different visions of how to respond to this crisis. I mean, the 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 county was very focused on a housing first model, which, to be fair, is housing plus services. And that is uh the the right way to do it. That is how they did it in Houston. Um, it's the the most uh cost effective thing. But it's very hard to build housing in Portland, and when you're in a crisis situation, you need something else. On the other hand, the city was proposing some truly insane ideas, like opening up five mass shelters with a thousand beds each. Things that have never been shown to have any kind of success anywhere else. So um luckily, we seem now about eighty percent of Portlanders, based on my, you know, just being at people's doors. Uh, we seem to have come around a common vision of giving people a room with a door that locks. And that that seems to be the thing that brings together the impulse to serve people right now and and to get folks off the street. But also to do so in a way that uh provides for their dignity. If we can keep into the eighty percent of Portlanders who think that this is the way to respond to the homeless crisis and not go to fringe ideas like. You know, military style roundups on the one hand, or just leaving people out there until we build a lot of affordable housing. On the other hand, if we can do that, I think we can have a functioning joint office. The city needs to take some of the responsibility for this, and I know we, you you know, the they've turned uh the county chair into the scapegoat for every single problem. The truth is, nobody's covered themselves in glory uh during this. We have not done a good job citing and permitting things. If you look at Arbor Lodge. If you look at uh the the failure to the site and permit a a sobering center, these are collective failures. And we need a city council that uh sees this uh as something urgent that will commit to giving the county a menu of options of like, here's where you can open a sobering center. Here's where you can open treatment centers. We've already obliterated every regulatory obstacle for you. Now do your job, uh same with shelters.
Thank you. Um, so we only have about nine minutes left, so I'm going to just really try to keep you super limited to like thirty seconds on housing. Um, Lisa, if you can go first on this question without talking about permitting, because I think that is widely understood to be a a problem. Are there any like um a a couple ideas that you would look to to try to spur housing development?
Yeah, thank you. And I think um looking at Boston Mayor Wu is a really good example of just trying all of the things all at once. But a couple of things I would prioritize are areas where it seems like developers and affordable housing advocates are really aligned. Permitting reform is one of them. I won't talk about that. Um, another area is looking at zoning to increase density. Um, we know that we need more housing. We can either go out or we can go up. And most people seem to agree that we want to focus on building up first. So I would definitely look at that, especially looking at efforts like the Residential Infill Project. And the East uh Inner East Side For All, which Chad mentioned earlier, um as ways to um make. Make units more affordable and also make those units pencil out for developers. Um, another thing we could look at is uh single stair reforms, which many states have done. Um, that would make it possible to to make better use of our space and make more beautiful units that Portland loves. A lot of the complaints about density are usually around these high rises that don't add to the character of the building, so that's or of a neighborhood. So that's a way to address that as well. So those are some of the initial things that I would look at.
Great, thank you. Um, Olivia, a couple of thoughts from you in terms of housing?
Sure, just a little bit outside of the norm. I agree uh on permitting, I won't go there, but. I think we ought to look at some alternative construction like manufactured housing. There was actually a group of developers that came to City Hall with a proposal to create a manufacturing center and build manufactured manufactured housing. That can be put up very quickly and with less expense around the city, and I think uh the city just sort of blew them off. But that's something that uh we could bring back. I also really believe we need to bring back the SRO. We used to have a lot of single room occupancy hotels downtown. There were all, not all, but many of them are gone because of code problems. That that's a very viable form of housing for a lot of people that should be brought back. We could buy up some of the hotels that are distressed downtown or or motels, but that's an option we should look into further as well.
Thank you. Um, Eli, a couple of ideas on housing?
Yep, uh repair our our reputation, uh damage, stop the outflow of residents to make this an appealing place to invest. And uh I, Boston actually has some cool stuff with new uh like sort of guaranteed timelines uh that I think would be great. I really like this pre-vetted ADU program uh and Portland's kind of embraced a little bit, did some bend in some places. I would like to see if we could scale that up and maybe to smaller multifamily developments that gives some predictability and reduces costs for somebody who might be willing to just. Put some units here.
Great, thank you. Um, Bob?
Yeah, a a couple of things. One, I think we uh have to look at zoning. An example is inclusionary zoning. That uh buildings with twenty more units have to have a certain percentage of affordable housing. My understanding is that has driven a number of decisions to build units uh or buildings of nineteen or less units to a- avoid that. There has to be a discussion of that. I agree with the SRO. Proposal that Olivia brought up, in fact, over the weekend, somebody brought that up to me, so I I think that's something that should be looked at. And I also agree with the the modular housing concept. When I was a school superintendent, we actually built some schools on a modular basis. Barge the pieces uh to location in Alaska, put them together, very high quality, cost effective. Um, so it's something that might be looked at for some of our housing needs.
Thank you. Chad?
Uh, yeah, a lot of good ideas, and I think that we are gonna get three good pro-housing votes at a district four. Um, I think that increasing zone capacity is really important in in places that are already transit rich, especially in close to jobs and close to educational opportunities. I think um I I always believe in uh offering more incentives than mandates, you know, you want to give incentives or things you want more of. Uh, if you create mandates, there's, you know, even if for something good, there's always the risk of of losing a developer. So um uh adding uh height, uh the amending height restrictions for affordable housing is one way to do it. Uh, Seattle, uh I think will allow people to go up to one extra story than we will do in Portland. For um uh construction that's like like stick based or whatever construction. I'm not a builder, so uh the the exact terminology will escape me. But that means that those projects might pencil out in Seattle in ways that they don't in Portland, because they can go an extra story higher. Um, I I believe in mixed income and mixed age um uh development. I think that uh allowing, finding a path forward where we can make a hard decision as to what to do with all these office buildings downtown. Uh, most of them aren't going to be eligible for conversion to residential, some will, and we need to identify those. The rest of them, we need to make a plan because we can't just have blight that drives down the property values of of everybody around them. Uh, also, like long term, I I think we need to start thinking about a social housing program and about community land trust. Um, uh, these are things that are possible. It's happening in Baltimore for an American example. Um, and I also uh believe that TIF districts have a role to play. Um, I know the evidence around them isn't um universally terrific, but if something isn't generating a lot of tax revenue right now. Um, then it might be worth uh foregoing certain charges upfront so that we can collect property taxes in the future.
Thank you. And Eric?
Yeah, you know, I um I'm coming at this from the philosophy of maximizing units and minimizing aspirational requirements. And the reason I say that is for me, on this topic, there really are no sacred cows that to protect. I'm open to far more than what I'm about to list. Uh, but I think that getting back to SROs and three bedroom apartments are the thing where we need to invest public dollars. Those are our two types of units that are most difficult to get the market to create. And most needed when it coming out of homelessness in a shelter situation, and most needed for families who are in poverty, those two types of units. But I also think across the board, we've got to incentivize every type of unit at every income level. Because our market is squeezed at every level. I think we can do that with some SDC waivers. We are sitting on bundles of money in some of the SDC funds, and I think those are worth worth investigating. Um, we also used to do a lot more ownership models in Portland where we would create homes if they were sold to people at a certain MFI. That ownership model, we don't do a lot of investment in those, but we've got neighborhoods who are filled with those types of homes, and they protect families who are at the. One twenty five MFI rate from rising rents and wealth growth is important in that. As the downtown folks, I think it's incumbent upon us to talk about doubling the the heights for buildings, all types, not just affordable, but all types in downtown. Uh, Central City can afford it, and we can, our infrastructure can handle it. Um, and then I also, I think it's time that we have a serious, serious conversation about reforming. Or scrapping the Design Review Commission, who today essentially can stop projects, any housing project, based on things like the color of the glass. And I think that's super inappropriate in this type of housing emergency. So when I say no sacred cows, I totally mean it.
Great, thank you very much. Um, the last question, and Olivia, if you can start off on this, it's pretty, pretty short. Um, just basically, you know, there are more than a hundred people running for office in Portland. And I guess I want to know what quality or talent do you bring that makes you a must have on the city council?
Thanks Helen. Uh, I think what makes me a must have is my experience and my ability throughout my career to deliver. Uh, in very difficult circumstances across the board in housing, in transportation, in environmental protection. And in local and state relations. So I'm a person that brings that experience, the skills and the record of success. I think that's. and in local and state relations. So I'm a person that brings that experience, the skills and the record of success. I think that's what we need. Also, people who can work across the aisle, who can work with just about anybody and who has a record of building coalitions and being collaborative.
Great. Thank you very much. Eli, same question for you?
Yeah, I think, you know, working calmly in very difficult situations, whether it's Afghanistan or trying to talk a person off of a bridge, it's going to be a useful skill. And I think that, you know, the unique thing I bring is that sort of up-close nuanced understanding of some of the stuff we're dealing with on the ground that I hope will help inform policy choices and advise the rest of the group.
Great. Thank you. Bob, how about you? Why are you a must-have?
Well, I think of a must-have because I have a record of proven leadership and collaboration during four years on the council and twelve as Mayor Ketchikan. I honed my skills working with diverse groups of people to address complex challenges. And I think that experience gave me valuable insights into municipal governance, budget-making and collaborative problem-solving. I'm a believer in data-driven decision-making. I also understand the need to address diverse communities. I have years of experience in Alaska, working with indigenous communities and tribes. I'm committed to doing that in Portland. And then finally, I have experience dealing with regional governments and other governments. So we need to work with the county, we need to work with the state, we need to work with the federal government, and I have experience doing all of that.
Thank you. Chad?
We haven't always been a city that has been led by evidence. And that's something that I have a lot of experience in. That's, I did my PhD in leadership and policy. Those are qualities that will be very important on city council. I've trained policy researchers and leaders from all over the world on how to use evidence to shape good policy. But I think that the most important thing and the thing that people that live in this district and work in this district want is somebody that's going to listen to them. And they know that Coach Chad has been inside their schools. I know what it feels like there when it's ninety degrees outside. And I've worked with their families. I've been with them when they were going through financial hardship and their kid needed a scholarship to be in their after-school program. So I think that that connection to our neighborhoods is something that I have that you don't see as frequently in local politics.
Thank you. Eric, why should you be one of the twelve?
You know, I think that, I mean, I think I'm known for some sharp elbows, but at the same time, I'm a person who has a record of working with people who I've disagreed with in the past, right? I lost to Sharon Meyer in a long time ago and she was my first endorser in this race. And I think, and we are working together to make the county more effective today. But I think that Portlanders need somebody who is willing to challenge Portland dogma. We have gone along to get along, I think, way too long. When the county started its foil and straw program, I helped stop that within the first three days. When they wanted to raise fees against restaurants after the pandemic, I helped stop that. That kind of challenge has got to happen at City Hall. If that takes a little bit of sharp elbows, I bring that to this table. But across all four districts, I've got allies and friends and people who I've learned things from. On this call, I've learned things from folks. And I think that I do bring one heck of a record for the district and for the city, but I also think I bring a collaboration and a willingness to like hear the next piece, hear the next item and work on both sides.
Great. Thank you very much. And Lisa, if you can close us out?
Thanks. Yeah, I'm the only candidate in the race with government transition experience. I know how to work in moments of transition and crisis. I've built my career working in those moments of change to build confidence in new political systems. And I'm the only candidate who brings that skill set. I know how important these first two years are going to be for our new form of government. And we're not going to be able to solve any of the problems that we need to face about climate, housing, public safety and houselessness unless we have confidence and the people who live in Portland have confidence that the new system is working. And I know how to do that and implement that effectively, and that's what I want to bring to the next council.
Thank you, everyone. That was a really fantastic conversation. Really appreciate your taking the time to talk with us. And if we have any more follow-ups, I'll call you individually, but thank you again.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.